Well, welcome everyone to our special council meeting for the Council of Village of Yellow Springs to discuss village goals. We are here. Judy Funduroco.
Yeah, Stokes.
I am here.
House.
Here.
Devoe Leonard.
Here.
Gustafson.
Yep.
Thank you. Also President Village Manager Burns, Planning and Zoning Economic Development Coordinator, Meg Leatherman, Police Chief Birch, Project Lead Chair Dulo. That's it.
Okay, good to meet you all. All right. Thank you all for being here. Because after we end, I want to start with that. This is an important task of council set goals for Village of Yellow Springs. And so I very much think that this session is going to provide clarity and direction for staff going to pass forward. So thank you for being here. We don't have any members of the public. Thank you, Cameron's for being here. Appreciate it.
You have to act like you're part of the family.
He does live here.
Mm-hmm, that's true. Um, I do want to quickly set the stage for the discussion tonight, and I want to start with the process to how we got here. So each council member submitted their individual goals to Judy. Judy then shared them with me. I compiled them, analyzed them, and in that process, I identified these six key themes from all of your submissions. Our mission tonight is to review council's proposed goals under each theme, discuss them, and ultimately come to consensus on what goal we want to keep, right? And what we want to prioritize. So I would say consensus isn't really key here tonight. We need to reach a majority agreement that the proposed goals under each theme is worthwhile and should be kept. We also received several proposals from village boards and commissions, which you should all have in front of you, including the Environmental Commission, Act of Transportation, and a member of the Planning Commission. So if council supports any of those proposed goals, we'll add them to the appropriate theme for consideration when needed. I want to thank each of each of you for putting thought into this process to start. And what we're aiming to do tonight is look at the collective vision and ask, what do we want to accomplish for the villagers? So tonight is very much about clarity, alignment, and direction, want a shared vision forward. Once we agree on what matters most, the strategies and the actions for all of these will come later. So what is a goal and what are we looking for tonight? I just want to briefly touch on that. So a goal is going to be a clear and specific outcome of what we want to achieve. So think of a statement about what we want to accomplish. That would be a goal. So this is very much about agreeing on the whats at this point, not the how. I also want to clarify that some of the goals that we're going to discuss tonight will be broad, while others may be specific, and that's perfectly fine. Goals of those are necessary, and they serve very different purposes. Broad goals give, you know, big vision, aspirational, in nature, you know, for example, enhance community engagement, right? That's something that's very broad. Specific is going to help us tackle more immediate or concrete issues. So for example, creation of a quarterly newsletter to keep residents informed. So both types are fine, and it's good to have both of these in the process. Our biggest guardrail tonight is going to be timing. We have a lot of material to cover and it's a lot of time, so I've allocated 20 minutes for each of these themes. Judy will be keeping time. Thanks Judy. And if you can please give us a heads up as we approach, five-minute heads up as we approach the end of each section. When we meet that 20 minutes, no matter where we are in the conversation, we'll wrap up the final thought and we'll move on to the next. When it comes to roles this evening, tonight I am facilitating. So that means I'll be helping guide the discussion. I'm here to play a neutral role throughout the session. I may ask some clarifying questions if something is unclear to me, but my job is just to keep us moving and make sure that we stay on track. After our session, I'm going to take care of cleaning all of these up language-wise. I don't always spend time on grammar tonight. It's more important that council conceptually agrees to these goals. So I can worry about cleaning up the language later. We're joined by several team members of staff here tonight. They are ultimately here to observe, but should any of you have any questions about any of these goals, whether it be understanding the feasibility, they're here to support you in that way. After council has finalized and agreed upon set of goals, staff will then take these away, flush them out into actual work plans. That is when you'll start to see timelines against them. Staff will get assigned to tasks, and that will be our role after we have a set of goals. And then of course, council, you are the participants tonight, so studying the vision, providing guidance for staff through these goals, but most importantly, looking for consensus on the proposed goals. So before we jump in, I want to propose one final point for agreement, and that's the number of goals per theme. So it is my suggestion that we keep each theme to no more than three to five goals. Five being like the max limit. So what do we think of that? Keeping it at five per theme?
Five's a number. I mean, it's a good, good, good round number, and I guess we, you know, ultimately, we want to be successful, you know? So that we want to keep in mind what's reasonable, so, you know, five per is, is, is a lot, but that could give us a good start.
I mean, the only thing I think is that typically, a lot of stuff can be collapsed. So, I mean, that might be another thing, just to, rather than worry about like, if we add a sixth thing, like knowing when you clean it up, you could probably combine that or whatever, so.
Okay. Okay. All right. So at some point, maybe throughout here, we are going to have to prioritize all this. So just keeping that in mind. Any questions before we begin?
Oh, yeah. Can we add to the list the goals?
Yeah, when we get to the theme. Yeah, if you, if you want to propose another one, absolutely. Yeah.
And have you already flagged where those other three go?
The other three.
So Act of Transportation, because I guess, so you, you know that's going to go three, and the other two are housing.
So when it comes to, the only ones that we're going to look at under here are the ones that council proposed.
Gotcha.
So with the ones that Act of Transportation, E.C., if council has the appetite for any of those, then I would look for someone to bring that up and raise it and add it to the theme, and then I'll be looking for majority consensus that it should be added.
When we're at that theme.
When we're at that theme. Yeah, for what makes sense to me. So I think Act of Transportation and E.C., I mean, quite a lot will kind of fall under number three here.
Yeah, and the other two are housing, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Just making sure we're, you know, know where those are going.
Yep.
Cool.
All right. So I want to start by reviewing the six themes for submission. Is everyone okay with this six, these six themes here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, Judy, you've already given a timer. 20 minutes. We'll start with our first theme. Community Engagement and Communications become one proposed goal under this theme. Continue to improve community communication regarding village activities, elevate website enhancements. Thoughts on this goal?
So, what came to my mind just now was with the engagement.
Yeah.
But, hey, Carmen.
Hey, Carmen.
So, not, not trying to step on the toes of either the downtown business partnership, whatever they call this week, and there was no disrespect in my saying it that way. I just don't know if they're still active or what's going on, or stepping on the toes, nor stepping on the toes of Chamber. I, and I don't know if this is appropriate, that, that we do something, think something to make sure that we're engaging with, I'm thinking primarily businesses, businesses that want to grow, or businesses that might see departure from the village as a better option than growth. And, and again, so this may not be the best place for it, but it's, it's more leaning towards maybe economic development, but, but when I talk about engagement, I mean, so, you know, economic development is this big old hairy thing, but certainly what I'm talking about in terms of being in the faces of these business owners who are thinking, what do I do now? Do I build, buy, or split? I, I think, I'd like for us to be able to have done something to ensure that everyone here either is planning to stay, or that we can help them stay if, if they think leaving's a better option.
Engaging businesses.
Yep.
Yes. Think maybe economic development?
Yep.
When we get to that theme? We've got a proposed goal around strengthening partnerships with businesses. But do you feel, is there something more specific within communication that you want to make sure falls under this category?
Not really, in that it probably is more economic development, but again, you know, engagement is more of an action word.
Correct.
You know, and that's what piqued my interest. So as long as we are doing it or thinking about it, and God forbid somebody leave to go to greener pastures without our being aware, I mean, that would, that would be slightly tragic.
Okay. So on this goal, other thoughts on this specific goal? Under the theme?
I do. So I had proposed as part of the communication, trying to pull up my email quickly, you know, that as we work towards, you know, being stewards of the taxpayer and, you know, just individuals with integrity, I'm not saying no one is, but I'm just saying, you know, we all can have improvement. I think that we really need to monitor our communications. I think that we need to be open and honest and transparent. You know, I had mentioned before that there's a lot of dialogue that's not necessarily kind, and, you know, we have that sign posted in the village every year on both ends of town, and I think as elected officials, the village and just every elected official in our town, I think that we, we need to honor that. And, you know, we should always have a goal of being transparent and trying to work together, even when we don't agree. So I don't know how you put that in something neat and pretty, but I just think that hateful rhetoric, we, Yellow Springs, we should not mimic what we're seeing nationally. I think that we need to really take a hard look at ourselves and ensure that, you know, we are doing better.
And, so I, I thought the word newsletter was in there somewhere, but...
No, that was just an example that I gave.
Okay.
A specific one, yeah.
So regarding, I mean, so here, here's the deal. Green County Public Library is going to have a levy, and maybe later this year, do we, are we interested, this is more of a Ben Johnny question, maybe, are we interested in sharing with our newsletter or anything else, information about somebody that is not really us, but sort of, kind of is? No is a great answer. So again, I just thought, because we, there was, I'm, I'm on the board, and there was conversations about communicating about, you know, the levy, and, and not so much about the levy, it's just like, the libraries are so great, so when the levy comes, you're going to want to vote, vote yes. Sorry about that. So anyway, are we interested in getting anything, any information, or sharing information that's not generated by us?
I think it's a great situation for the Green County Director to come share at council versus posting it on our sites and all that.
Yeah.
Because we have something else that we need to put on ours, you know, we got a levy as well, so. If they want to come do a presentation, I think that's, we can definitely share that, but I don't know, I'm up to everybody else as well.
So just, I'm just going to point something out. We have real kind of council-specific goals, it seems like, and then we have village goals. So, I mean, this is sort of build as village goals, as opposed to council-specific goals. Maybe we should break those out separately, but I also think we're getting into such minutia. We're never getting through this.
Let me ask this. Brian, you proposed a goal, I think. Where's where's your hat when you can offer that?
Yeah, and actually, if anyone read my memo that followed a little bit later, you know, I'd mentioned the newsletter.
Yeah.
I highlighted, you know, website enhancements to me are about elevating, like, you know, we've got great work that our commissions are doing and other things, and so I know that's all in the works. And then I think the only other thing, and this came out of the last Village Cafe, is a lot of folks mentioned at the different tables I was at, that they know the village is doing a lot and responding to citizen concerns, but there's no way to kind of go and see what we've done. And so the last thing I added in my little, like, blurb, and actually, I'm kind of most interested in that really, is would we be comfortable with figuring out some way to, like, log in citizen concerns and then have an associated column with, here's how we responded? I don't know exactly what that looks like, but...
You mean in the newsletter?
Uh, not necessarily the newsletter, but, you know, just some kind of, like, whether it's on the website, or whether it's just something that we have, and so, you know, we can follow up on, it could be in the manager's report, I don't know. But, a lot of people that just were kind of like, we know there's a lot of stuff going on, but it's hard to kind of match it up. So, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted some clarification about the newsletter, or where, or where that would, where that would be.
Yeah, I, and I, that one really came out of, because that Village Cafe, I think, happened two Saturdays ago, and I just heard that repeatedly. I think it benefits us all to do that, but, you know, but not to make it like some, like, really difficult thing, so.
So I want to ask a question if I can.
Yeah.
So, and, and we don't have to answer the specific question if it's not what you're looking for, but, so looking at the goal, continue to improve community communications, R.E. village activity, elevating website enhancements, what specifically, and I don't mean these specific actions, but I mean, what is it that needs improved or slash isn't getting communicated properly? Do we have an example of that so we can understand what this goal is trying to accomplish? So is it, for example, is it specific to the way council communicates things to the community? Because I don't know that that's necessarily a thing, or is it like, the police department, we should specifically do better with communications, and here's what we're referring to? Does that question make sense?
For, yeah, for me, mostly I was thinking, like, I love what we're doing, and that's why continue was what I led with. But, the two specific things, I guess, I, I noted were, you know, as we continue to build out the website, commissions, for example, like, you know, knowing what the Environmental Commission, Public Arts are doing, and then this newer thing about, like, we heard your concern, here's what we did, you know, and whatever that looks like. But, yeah, for the most part, I'm just excited we're doing it, and I think we're doing a really good job, so.
All right. Other thoughts on this goal? Do you think this goal?
Yeah.
I think so, but I, like, we had added at our meeting, when the agenda was being planned, to have a conversation about, like, how we interact as individuals in our, in our communication. So I think that we need to have some bullet points in there, you know, for, that the, you know, we will each work to be transparent, we will use our village email for communications only, that we will honor, you know, whoever has been deemed in charge of a depart, you know, a project, you know, that we will go through the village manager, those types of things.
Any other thoughts on this goal? It's sounding like we have a majority that wants to keep it. Okay?
Yeah, I just think what Trish is talking about is a second, I mean, it's...
Different.
Yeah, it's different, right? Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think we, I can say this, I think we've vastly improved over the last year and a half, and we've learned a lot over the last year and a half, and we are going to continue to learn and grow as we go forward, so to make one specific goal or a measurable goal, you'll never get that out of us.
Right.
It's a continue.
Yes, and so many things to remember, and I think the website, you know, yeah.
And a prime example is Civic Plus. I mean, it's a great tool, but we see where we can get better because we're limited, and we can't get people to jump on board. The ones that are on board love it. The two that didn't like it, they got off of us, so we will continue to grow, so.
So you see that goal, Johnny, as inclusive of that outreach, like Civic Plus and...
Civic Plus, website, the newsletter, ongoing.
Yeah, all the channels that are used to share what's going on.
And I know, I heard what Brian said about the people that want to see what we've done. The problem is, is they're also not paying attention, because we broadcast every time we do something, and we can't just go get their hand and walk them back and say, here's what we've done. So that's where you and I have talked about, and, and I think you and I have talked about, is kind of making like a 10-year report to show people, because a lot of people don't know what's happened over the last 10 years, but we need to get that messy down.
Right. I mean, I think the other thing is, like, a living document. I mean, that, because, I mean, you're right, we broadcast it all the time, but how many times does somebody tune into a meeting or whatever? So if they had a place to say, oh, yeah, like, they did do a million things on Yellow Springs Fairfield Road to make it safer, you know, like, I mean, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about.
Yes, I'm with you.
I do think it's measurable, though. I mean, because, right, I mean, you know, I mean, we can measure that we get those quarterly newsletters out every time, we can measure that, you know, we're, you know, incrementally improving the website, I mean, so I, that's what I like about it.
I do like you just said a levy document, and, and we'll talk about that later.
Cool.
Okay.
Quick question, just a nitty-gritty question. I know we send the newsletter out to every household in the 45387 area goal. How many households is that?
Six, like 2,900 plus, yeah.
2,900 plus.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now are we going to move on?
Yes, we're good with this. Any other goals to submit under this theme? No. All right, let's go ahead. All right. We need to turn to timer. Good. I need sustainability and fiscal responsibility. So, first proposed goal, upgrade slash make changes to the IP so that customer reports are fluid and easily available, conduct annual screening with vendor. Thoughts on this goal?
Well, I think that was Trish's, and I know she's commented, commented about it before, where, I guess, real world, there was some information formatted in a certain way that she was looking for. I, I think that's valid, certainly the folks who are the end users, village staff that are the end users, need to weigh in, and I don't know if this means buying different modules, or if it's just a, a training issue, but certainly getting the most out of the tool that we're using, you know, to, 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 to track everything that, that VIP tracks is, is worthwhile. And, and, you know, in general, we can say, yeah, make changes, improve it, but I think what actually changes, staff needs to be involved with that.
Oh, definitely. Well, it's my understanding, like, I asked for some reports, and that part of the information was on paper, part of the information was in VIP, so, like, the reports aren't able to be created. And VIP is an amazing tool when it has the information in it, so I just think that we need to ensure that, you know, not just if an elected official asks, but if we get a public records request, or we have an auditor that comes in and asks for, you know, reports from VIP, that, that we are able to do so.
Yeah, does that make sense?
I also think, for the record, I just want to let you know, Michelle was going to be here literally five minutes before the meeting, had her family emergency, and I asked her to go ahead and take care of that. So she was going to be here, though.
Any other thoughts on this goal?
What, what, do we know staff's thoughts on making the changes, or do they feel like they're happy?
I can tell you the thoughts of the ladies, Linda and Michelle has done some training, they have met with some people that Trish put us in touch with, there is some upgrades that need to be done, there is also some things that we're correcting currently. So that goal is achievable, and that's one that we can keep on track, and we can assign, you know, things to it. But it is an ongoing goal, it's not going to get fixed overnight. So, yes, that is currently being worked on, but we need to keep it as a goal to be able to. We did it for a couple of years prior to, year and a half ago, we always put it on there, a budgeting software, we always put a set of stuff on there, but it never come up for motion. So we're currently inactively working on it, so.
So when we ask about upgrades, is that, is that a financial?
It's a financial. It will be, yes. Some of it is the VIP software, like Trish had, is a very robust software program, but we also have one of the oldest versions, so some of that is, is a cost to upgrade. And it also is, is some of it is the upgrade, and then you got to enter the data, so we're currently working on this.
Okay. I'm very biased too, Adam, Brian, Karen, any thoughts on this goal? We're keeping?
Makes sense to me.
Okay. Okay. All right. Continue identifying revenue opportunities and close gaps in uncollected taxes and fees. Thoughts?
Great, thanks.
Gavin, I think it was mine, and you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it, I don't, that's a good thing, I can't tell if it was me or not, but I agree with it. And I, and when I read it now, I, I'd look down and say, where's the infrastructure piece? Because when I, when I read close gaps and uncollected taxes and fees, you know, it almost makes, also makes you think about the water loss. I know, so, and I don't know that I put that down, but that's, that would be infrastructure, so. And, I mean, that was sort of more of a generic thing, it was not meant to solve a known problem, but I do know, you know, we get these periodic reports of uncollected taxes and fees, and we either collect them, write them off, or whatever, and, and I would just propose that for the long-term plan, that we end up collecting more and writing off less, if we can.
What other thoughts on this goal?
I'll just weigh in now to say, I'll just be especially listening for staff where, so there's several of these things, like, I probably wouldn't prioritize personally, but I'll, but I don't mind us doing it.
Sounds fine.
But if, the bigger question is just, is it, do we have enough capacity to do all these things? So, I don't know if it's like at the end or something, but there's several of these things where I'm like, this doesn't really feel like it's a priority to me, I wouldn't, that's not what I would lead with.
Yeah.
But I'm also not opposed to doing it. There would be other things that maybe I might want to put more energy into, so that if we're just filling it up, so that we're keeping each other happy, and nobody's saying no to anybody's stuff, I would, at some point, I might say, oh, well, maybe we could do a little more in other areas if we didn't load up with all this stuff.
Looking at that list, don't you prioritize, and isn't on that list?
You mean, like, in this section, the financial sustainability?
Uh-huh. Because we have six goals under this, we're looking to keep it to five.
And I would submit, getting to five, getting to five from six does not just mean, in my opinion, dropping one. It could be dropping more and adding something else, and I think that's maybe the question on the, on the table.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not any of these that I feel particularly strongly about, I guess. So it's more to me, like, if we had two here, then could we get more somewhere else? And the number is totally arbitrary, because it's really about the quality, not the, you know, quantity.
Yeah.
So in several of these things, it feels like we already do. Like, this one, from everything I can tell from Finance Committee, we, we do this, we are consistently trying to do this. And honestly, I think that's the case on just about every one of these.
Well, Gavin, you, you brought up something that I had a question about. Continuing to do something just means we're doing our jobs over here, as opposed to this being a goal for council to say, hey, let's, that could, let's do something more than you're already doing to get better at a thing. I mean, it would be very embarrassing if we weren't going after uncollected taxes and fees, it's what we do, it's our job. So, I mean, I don't know, but I just think maybe we need to more clearly define what is a goal, as opposed to what is a function of government with which we are either happy or unhappy. And if we're unhappy, then, then we do need to assign a goal.
Judy, I agree with you 100%, and even though that one is being attributed to me, the fact that it begins with continue, that's, that's your point. You know, the first word is continue. So, and, and as I said, I, the implication is not that there's a problem that's being solved by this. It was just sort of, you know, a thing that I think needs to be happening, and even though I just, just, just did say get into five, doesn't mean dropping one, that could be the sacrificial lamb.
Okay.
Because I, because when I jump down to the bottom, and it's not because it's me, but conduct periodic financial audits, I would definitely want to keep that more than this.
Okay. Drop. Drop this?
Sure.
Okay. Alright. Pursue additional grant funding for infrastructure, housing, and public safety projects.
That's a, we should have just put continue right in front of it, you know?
Yeah, but don't, but, yeah, 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 but, I guess, I don't, I don't want to go through a word search, continue, and just drop everything. But, um, but doing that, getting that done is a big deal.
Yeah.
And, and I guess the question is, are we doing it the best we can? And if, if the goal is to pursue additional or continue, if that means ratchet it up a little bit, you know, our goal used to be three, now we want five of them. I mean, that's, that's an advancement. That's a progressive goal.
And I think that's part of, Johnny, what you said, I mean, that, you know, these are ongoing. And so I don't think it's wrong to, like, recognize that we still prioritize this. That's why I think, like, some of these things that we would knock out, to me, are just kinda like details under, like, you know, financial sustainability or whatever. You know, so I, I see, like, there's an overarching category, and, like, four of these things are items that we wanna do to achieve that, so.
And, and Brian, I agree with you, I'm sorry.
No, we, we, we know that this is already happening. It's made evident in the managers' reports. So, yes, and also, to maybe expand on it, um, specialty grant funding for environment, for, like, water cleanup, or, um, that, that kinda stuff. So more, more specialty, more specialty stuff. Just, you know, to start looking, to start looking at, at that in addition to. But it's already, but, I mean, that's it, the special, the specialized stuff.
And I think this is a measurable goal as well, because it's literally a spreadsheet that we can have for different things, like police, and infrastructure, and housing, and environmental, to where we know how many times we're applying.
Yeah.
Um, kind of like a grants calendar, like Gavin's been saying, and things like that. A way we can, cause if we don't get it this time, then we know when we're gonna do it. OPWC comes up every year, so we wanna make sure that everybody knows that we're applying.
So there's, so.
So it is measurable.
Right, so specifically with, I said water cleanup, that was just the first thing that came to my head. But there's, there's, oh, yeah, there's, um, there's Ohio Department, no, no, there's not any Ohio Department of Education stuff. But Ohio Endowment, Ohio Endowment for the Arts for, um, coming up with programming for kids, for, you know, for stuff that's only available to municipalities. And so, you know, if, I guess my question would be, if, you know, we, we start to expand on this, if I find something, um, for PACC or for EC, I can come to you and say, hey, this is the thing. This is, you know, it's not, and these, these grant applications are simple. A lot of them are really simple, because they want to give people, or municipalities specifically, the money. So that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Cause with all this other stuff, infrastructure, housing, public safety projects, you guys got that in the bag.
Okay. How many were in the sentence?
So, so I, I'm gonna ask a question. How many, do you know, Johnny, off the top of your head, and, and you tell me if it's not even appropriate to try to do this. How many grants we secure on an annual basis?
I don't, I cannot answer that off the top of my head, but I do have a log of what we have been awarded, uh, in the last, um, since Denise and I started keeping track of it. But I can get that information.
And, 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 you know, another w- word besides continue is improve. And, and to your point, um, I'm glad there is something written down, you know, but I think someone, I don't know if it was Gavin or someone else, mentioned a, a calendar, because some of these things, you know, are cyclical. And we'd like to know a year in advance that something's coming, or months in advance, not, oh, it's due tomorrow, and we gotta scour.
Well, we also, we have, we also gotta make sure that we budget for grants, for match funding. So if we know when they're coming, if they're an annual thing, then we can put that in the budget, knowing that we're going to apply, and we have that matched funding, so.
We're gonna move on to the next. Develop and implement a long-term financial sustainability plan, including strategic budget adjustments.
That could be boiled down to just start the budget process even earlier. But tie it to, the, the thought was, get the strategic plan done, and then almost tie a strategic plan goal to every subsequent budget question.
Yeah, that's exactly what would happen. And I think strategic planning will come up later in a different theme, I guess. So should we, if we were, if we do a strategic plan, it would be aligned to the budget?
Yep.
Yeah, any of the goals? Do we keep this? Or do we fold this under, I think it is a fold under strategic?
Yeah, there's a, that is, yep, I think so. In fact, it's got the word strategic in there. Yep. Let's not forget it, though.
We won't forget it, we'll get there. Okay.
Are, are we saving time yet?
Yeah, twenty seconds. I mean, yeah, twenty seconds to your, it's the five-minute mark, sorry.
Explore options for cost-sharing agreements and partnerships to reduce financial burdens.
So we're accidentally doing that. I'm thinking about the, the Three Villages thing.
It's not accidental.
Okay, okay, alright. Well, that was the wrong word. Incidental.
There you go.
Yeah, so, so, you know, feel like unfortunate, feel like we're being forced to do it. But I just want us to do those kinds of things intentionally, to, to, to think about where we can get, get some wins there. And I don't, I, I can only imagine, I'm looking at you, Paige, cause I know you've been involved with these other municipalities from a policing and other, uh, call perspective, uh, but Johnny, same thing. I mean, I don't know, just, we, we, maybe we've got the big thing we can share with others, and vice versa. There's some places where that makes sense. And I guess the question is, you know, is this triumvirate, or these three villages, are we gonna be that thing forever? And do we wanna put enough thought in it to make sure it's a beneficial mutual relationship?
Other thoughts? Gavin? Brian? Other thoughts? No? Trish?
Yeah, she looked around the room.
No, no, sorry, I'm muted, so it takes me a minute. Nope, that's it.
Okay. Keep it? Keep it. We wanna keep it.
So this feels to me like village manager stuff, and you guys, a you guys thing. So when you encounter these, then of course, you're gonna go for them, right?
Yeah.
But I feel like that's, that's, that's more of a, that's, what, what's up?
I think what you're, what I, I need to say for you is, is we do this more than what you guys ever agree.
Right, right.
So if there's a goal on there to be had, it was to be, maybe not to let the whole entire village know, but what you guys know, so you know what we're doing with other people. So if you get questioned by other community members, you, or by other communities, you know what's happening.
Okay, I like that. Yeah, because this is, I need, this, I see this happening already. So continue to explore.
I, I think the continue, but the goal of that one would be to document the council, that when this takes place.
That, that, yeah, good, that's, I think, a, a, a real good point, Johnny, cause I can imagine, if I knew about twenty ways we were doing this already, that would not be on the sheet right now. And, and I did, you know, certainly the thing about the policing and all that, yeah, it's not accidental. But my point is, we, we didn't, we were not intentional about it. We didn't go seeking those opportunities. It was forced upon us, and, and we responded.
I also think that's measurable.
Okay. Then we'll keep it. Okay. Last one. Conduct periodic financial audits to ensure fiscal responsibility and efficiency.
And the thinking there was, and I haven't even read whatever the state auditors been sending us, you know, but to try to, uh, uh, deal with potential issues before the auditor tells us. We gotta issue, so if we can do like a pre-audit, or fake audit, or whatever. I'm, I'm sorry.
We have to behave ourselves in government. That is how we have to function. If we are not doing that, and we are going to get audited, we better clean our act up.
Yeah.
I mean, truly, that's, we, that is already mandated when you take a government job. I don't, but, that is something that, to elaborate on it a tad, um, Finance Committee. In terms of, you know, looking at spending, or planning, or, and those kinds of things. I think that's part of what that entity is meant to do.
And I, and presumably, you're talking about internal auditing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, maybe the audit throws folks off, but, yeah, I, I mean, I definitely think attaching Finance Committee to this kind of activity makes sense.
You know, so if that's just a transactional thing where we ch- uh, charge the Finance Committee with doing that, does it, does it remain a goal? Or does that, does that validate it as a goal, or is that, okay?
I think so. I mean, the other thing that these things, like, signal to the community, and to our partners, is that, yeah, you know, we wanna collaborate, and we wanna make sure we're, you know, financially doing what we should. So, I think it's good.
Yeah, and, and you're right, when you mentioned partners, I mean, there's a message. You know, we can't walk in a room all broke down and dirty and say, hey, partner with me. You know, we need to be clean and shiny, and look attractive.
Okay. We have four goals for finance.
Alright.
What about that?
Boy, you guys, perfect.
Wow. Alright. Municipal infrastructure and utility development. First goal, create plans to resolve status and future of existing municipal broadband utility. Thoughts on that?
I'm glad Brian put it down there. Is this something that's, either we're pushing it, or we're being pushed by what's happening? And I think part of, I think a little bit of both are happening. And I guess the conversation should be, do we just sit back and let Alta Fiber, or whoever it is, you know, just keep doing what they're doing? You know, I had, I, amongst others, dreamt of us having municipal broadband as a, as a utility. I, I know that's a big stretch, and when you find a utility, a municipal, municipality that has done that, you look at their website, I see a picture of a van with their name on it, and somebody with a uniform. So that's like staffing, and equipment, and stuff that, that you have to get into to maintain that. So Brian, I guess I would ask, uh, not for you to make a decision one way or the other, but are you thinking more of, does us, of us continuing down the road to do our own thing? Or looking for a, either public-private, or some other partnership?
Yeah, so to me, the focus is on the plan. And so, we've kinda let this hang out there now for almost two years. And, you know, I think it's very smart, like, in terms of how this goal would work. We need to resolve who owns it, then we need to decide, are we gonna keep it or sell it? And if we're gonna keep it, then are we gonna expand it? But, I mean, we can't keep on putting fifty thousand bucks into the budget to cover the overages, right? So, um, so that's why I just wanna, like, this is discreet to me, let's just clean it up. And Alta Fiber's different, cause they're coming anyway, right? But it impacts whether we keep it or not, so.
What is the desired end state, I guess, for council with broadband?
I don't think we know yet.
I don't know yet.
We need, we need the information, so.
And that's what this plan would do, is determine that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Information gathering.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'm like kind of a boots-on-the-ground, uh, like, you know, it's, it would be really nice to have municipal broadband. It would be a very nice thing to have. And also, there's so much competition. The idea that people aren't gonna be able to get all of this stuff that they get, the phone, the, you know, and, excuse me, like, the phone, the internet, and whatever the heck else these larger companies can do by bundling. What happens is that people aren't gonna, they don't wanna wait. They don't wanna wait for their technology. So it's like, hey, here's this municipal broadband, we have it, it's really this awesome thing. And also, you're not gonna, you're gonna have to go with this other company for your television. You have to go with this other company for your, you know, for your phone. And it's a matter of, um, the benefit, the cost for the consumer, for the people that are doing it. And so, I think that's a huge, a huge factor that we haven't discussed. And, you know, I was working in a couple houses, and it's like, oh, this would be really great. We'd love to contribute, and we'd love that, we'd love that. But we got all our stuff right here, and it's X amount of dollars. And for what we need, for the aid, the, the population of the village, this is what we need. You know, we're not doing a lot of stuff on the computer, I need to check my email, I need to make sure I can watch my, whatever I can watch, and have a phone. And I think that, you know, there's some businesses that do use the broadband and are very satisfied with it, but some of them don't, and they have AT, not ATT, but, well, whatever, anything else, spectrum. So I, it looks to me like we're throwing good money after bad, just to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, if I was gonna give my opinion, I think we should sell it. And there are entities that Alta Fiber won't buy it, but other entities that might buy it and further develop it to, like, do some of those things that we can't do as a village. So, but anyway, but I just wanna get this, like, done, wrapped up.
The measurable goal on that one is, is determine ownership, which I've, I've asked twice right now, as to if I get the answer, so. That's the measurable goal right off the bat.
So, okay, yeah, I, I don't wanna get to the, to the weeds. But between Johnny and Brian, I know you guys have been involved with the broadband discussion. I, I mean, isn't it tru- to what degree is it true that Alta Fiber needs, is it still true that they need our households to get their numbers?
They're not even, our households, Green County, says in the name, will not allow Alta Fiber customers in Yellow Springs to be part of their magical number, because they do not consider us underserved. Alta Fiber is just coming in because they went through our area, but they are not allowed to count our twenty-two-hundred residents as their final number. They are to be done by December of twenty-sixth, or they do not get paid, they have not been paid yet. They've not got it done.
Ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars. If they're not done, they don't get paid, so.
I, I did not know that, that we counting, they don't count us.
We're not underserved, is what they said.
We're not.
Trish?
Same thing with housing.
Any thoughts on this one? You too? No? Okay. Keeping? Council keeping?
Yeah, we have to do something.
Something, so information gathering, to help council make a decision on what to do with this. Okay. Develop long-term funding plan to continue focus on improvements in utility and sure.
So can I just ask a quick, cause I feel like, uh, this one was Brian, the next one from Trish, and then the next one for me. I, I'm not, it kinda feels like they all might be in the same, are they all the same thing? Or do they mean something different? So like, I don't know what the village capital improvement plan is, is that?
That's the ten years that we have.
The what?
The ten-year capital improvement. All of the infrastructure and buildings that change is big.
So it's broader than just utilities?
Correct.
It's also the buildings and properties?
It's the building and property that we house.
But it would keep, probably would keep utilities in it, or not, in capital improvement?
It would have to.
So I, I, yeah, I can't speak for them, but I know, I, I was just sort of going back to our budget conversation, the conversation we had with Finance Committee of just, I didn't know that's what it was called, but having communicated, here are the priorities, talking about it in the budget process, we were just sort of seeing the numbers in the future, and kinda going, okay, well, and then, but we didn't know what they were, or talking about them in depth. So that's something I'm, I'm definitely hoping we're doing this year. It seems like these things are all aligned.
This, I was wondering, for Johnny, this would come from this? So capital needs and priorities and projects would come from the ten-year capital improvement plan you have?
But I don't know that, now, council can weigh in, but prioritizing the projects, they ain't gonna be able to tell me what priorities, I'm sorry, they will not be able to tell us what priorities is needed, like at the list station, or at the sewer plant, that's gonna have to come from our staff and from the EPC.
Yeah.
Uh, prioritizing what they do with broadband, that's a different story. But when it comes to roads and streets and infrastructure and electric and all of that, then we're going to have to help them know what their priorities are versus them prioritizing for us.
But these are village goals, so I, I, I would agree, prioritization, prioritization stays, but that, you know, that's comes from you guys and informing us.
It looks like Gavin, you're looking for the communication on this, right? The communication around what are we prioritizing and why ahead of the budget cycle, right?
Yeah, and just, you know, you'd bring us in for, to take the lift station. You'd come and say, hey, here are things that we think are going to come down the pike. And in all of the areas, and then we have some discussions about, you know, the one I always feel like is both easy and very complicated is road maintenance, where it's like, do we want to fill every pothole, or most of the potholes, or almost none of the potholes? You can see how they approach it in, you know, there are some communities that they've just, that's not a priority. They have not, they have to use their money for other things. So I fully expect to be driven by staff, but then there is at some point a conversation about how we spend, right?
Yep, yep.
So I think two, three, and four are the same. I mean, or, that's definitely what I was trying to get at with.
Yeah, I think definitely two can fall into this, having the final meeting.
I don't, I have to go back to the word on the number three. You cannot finalize the Village Capital Improvement Plan because it changes on a daily and hourly basis. Nobody in this room knows that we have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar improvement to the boiler system because the internal workings of the pipe are bad. So we're trying to get numbers to be able to patch and repair, and we didn't know that until it started leaking.
Right.
Because it was installed in ninety-two, so we got to watch when we put finalize, because we finalized a five-year, but then we're like, holy crap, we can't finance five years, let's go to ten years. Now we're saying, holy crap, we can't finance ten years, now let's go out fifteen and twenty. So we can start, because we're not putting money away for the projects that are fifteen years from now because we're too busy using them right damn now, you know? So we have to get, we can't finalize it. If we finalize it, then we know what the end mark is and we're all done.
Well, that's, the finalize is, is not the right word, I don't think, in this application.
A living document.
Precisely.
Yeah.
It has to be a moving document, it has to be a living, there's no finalizing it.
Because our center, our center was a five-year plan, now it's a right damn now.
It's like saying, what's going to happen, what's going to go wrong with your house?
Yeah, I know, right, exactly.
Soon.
Johnny, what I was going to add that I felt was missing, and it, it ties right into this, so you just jumped ahead of it, was, um, no, no, you're fine. So, so asset management systems and prioritization criteria for what is in this capital improvement plan? So for example, how are we prioritizing? Is it safety first, is it cost effectiveness, is it community, um, what's important to the community? And then, and then a living document should include how we're tracking the condition and life cycle of all of these things, right? So that we know, okay, five years, seven years lifespan, it's, it's in the document, we know in two years it's going to need replaced, so.
So, and you make a great point, so our vehicles for public works and P G, they've got to be caught up, is in that asset management to where it does have a life cycle, it does turn around. We just added a water plant, a wastewater plant, and the lift stations to this, and Brad is in the process right now of putting everything in. When he does maintenance, when he has invoices, and then they will also have that same asset and lifespan. Hey, you're in critical mode, just like the, the pool. The pool motor is a great example. Next year, we know we got an eight-thousand-dollar bill because we got a pool motor out and have them as well. So, yeah, that's a great point, the asset management.
So continue updating the capital improvement plan. Communicate the priorities within this plan ahead of the budget cycle, so council understands the thinking here. I think this kind of, develop long-term funding plan to continue focus on improvements in utility infrastructure. This feels like, well, this feels like part of that whole hub into the capital improvement plan, unless there was a different thought here that I'm missing.
Yeah, again, I think, I, I think we're all thinking about the same thing, so it's just wording it the best way, yeah.
I think, I think.
Yes.
My last question.
Yeah.
I think one thing that's missing on all four of those is council really sitting back thinking about, what are we doing, somewhat to almost what Gavin's saying, prioritizing different things. Sidewalks and outside of this village are owned by the homeowners and they are to improve their own sidewalk and maintain their own sidewalk. Inside the village, we own, we maintain, we, I mean, we send out violations, we do everything. So maybe that's what we should look at, is what we're doing as a community that we can say, okay, it's time, we've done enough work. Now, I'm not saying we drop it all, but we're missing some pieces of sidewalk, but we shouldn't be the ones out there, hey, by the way, your tree lifted up, we need to replace that piece of sidewalk. I mean, we've spent a lot of money on sidewalk maintenance, but maybe what we should do is prioritize what we're doing. Are we trying to put sidewalks in communities that don't, parts of the village that don't have sidewalks? Are we just trying to do the safety part of the sidewalks? So that's where I need help, because some of them want sidewalks everywhere, some of them don't want sidewalks at all, they want to walk in the streets. Some of them want us to come grind a, a pebble out of the middle of their sidewalk because their kid tripped off. So that's what I need help for.
Right, well, and that actually connects to, if we're going to talk about the Active Transportation Committee under this, because that was one of the things they put out there. Should we revisit the sidewalk policy? So should we bring that up?
Yeah, do you think that's, yeah, because there is a proposed goal from the committee commission, if you don't fit under here, that you would like to see added.
Yeah, so this is the one, you know, so we got the memo a couple days ago. And, um, so it does like kind of throw in there, and, you know, it's popped up before. I don't think we can figure it out today, but, you know, do we want to look at that sidewalk policy and think about responsibilities and what we want and that sort of thing? But for me, my understanding of the overall like nature of this goal is to, uh, update and continue to implement the Active Transportation Plan. So, um, personally, I think that is very important to helping us to continue to secure grants around sidewalks and bike paths and whatnot. And I think the other good thing about it is that this committee has the expertise and the will to do work. So that, that compels me a bit, and they've already done some of that updating with the Active Transportation Plan, so.
Updating and communicating with our transportation plan.
Yep.
So I feel, I feel like what I heard Johnny say, and you can, I mean, I know that you will, is that we need to prior, prioritize what is the village's responsibility versus what are homeowners' responsibilities when it comes to sidewalks? And at what point is it a safety issue? We understand that you don't want sidewalks on this busy country road, but it's a safety issue. And so we're going to put sidewalks on this busy country road if we can get the money to do it. Grinding pebbles, I'm sorry. Like, so, so we need, we need, what is the village's responsibility and what is private responsibility?
Or is there a shared cost when it comes to that maintenance of the cycle? So, it's something that we don't have to decide today, but I think that's a measurable.
Okay.
It could be, though, a council goal very clearly and simply to review the sidewalk policy.
Right.
Because that is by ordinance and falls right in your bailiwick.
It's there, yeah.
And I agree, I think that was like a thing that stuck out that was different from the Active Transportation Plan. And, I mean, I've, I've heard all of us say something about it at some point, so maybe we should. Well, I mean, about the sidewalk policy, yeah.
Sidewalk, okay, review the sidewalk policy? Something we'd like to add?
Yes.
Same to you?
Yes.
Trish?
I'm viewing.
All good.
Okay. Review sidewalk policy. Okay. See five goals under this name.
See, I'm thinking there's four. So isn't there?
So we're going to, let's see, the capital improvement plan, and within that, sort of separately, communicate the priorities within that. And explain how staff prioritizes, right, and what council would like to see.
And you see number two as distinct from those two, or? Well, anyway, you can think about that, but I guess I'm seeing like one, and then two, three, and four.
Well, I'm developing a long-term funding plan to fund this.
Right.
I see as separate.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough.
But that's, yeah.
And then I guess I'd like us to support updating the Active Transportation Plan, I think.
What does supporting it look like?
I just, supporting that goal, what it means, the Active Transportation Committee is willing to do that work.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, it does require, uh, you know, some staff being engaged. But we did that walking audit, we're talking about another audit at Antioch College before the apartments go in.
It also requires, um, there's some dollars associated with it, because that's when the toll design is going to be for. So maybe we should look at, um, as a goal of that, trying to find a grant to fund updating that.
Yeah, I don't think we should commit to any money yet, that's for sure, yeah, so I think that's.
So maybe that's a goal, is to look for a grant for updating the Active Transportation Plan.
Can you, yes?
I mean, I don't know where it goes, but I, I do think it helps with getting the grant, though.
I do too.
When was it last updated?
Well, it's never been updated, so it came out in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
So, um.
And it's helped to get four, four grants that I know of.
Right.
The Active Transportation.
Yeah, and how many of the projects have been deleted, do you know, within this?
I mean, actually about.
Seventy-five percent.
I was going to say, most of the projects, yeah, so.
That document's got us probably, if I, off the top of my head, probably about four and a half million over.
Yeah.
So just, it might need to update before we can use it to obtain grants.
I thought it was being updated right now.
Is the thing I'm thinking, is the thing I'm thinking, but.
Okay. So.
But we could look for a grant to, you know, for a consultant to do the work, to do the update.
So do, does this council want to add under here a six, support the updated Act of Communication Plan?
Nope.
Okay.
I mean, I think we should.
Okay.
And if we send the signal that we don't want the Active Transportation Committee to do that work, then I don't know, I mean.
Well, I answered the question, do we want to make a six goal? We, we are, I mean, we, the Active Transportation Committee exists, we've got at least one liaison. So I think that falls into a continued thing, I mean, we are doing it. It may not be as actively engaged as, as, as we like to think, but, but I think we are, we are doing something. We are supporting the Active Transportation Committee. And so I'm not saying we don't support Active Transportation, I'm saying don't make a six goal.
I think you could eliminate number three, you could put three, two and three together, or three and four together.
Yeah, we could do that.
You could put three down with four, those two align.
Then, what do you guys want with two then? Number two? You think this, this is.
No, I would, I would combine three and four together.
Yeah, two is separate, because it's, it's working on funding.
There you go.
Okay. And we have four goals. So does the rest of council, Gavin, Trish, Carmen, do we want to add, uh, supporting the Act of Communication Plan?
I don't know enough about it to have a strong opinion. I think what I'm hearing from staff and from Brian is that it's helpful to have the plan to get funds, I assume for things that we want to do, not for just funds for random projects. So assuming that we like what it's getting us money for, yeah, I think I support it, but I, again, I don't feel strongly about it, so unless, if I'm missing something, that somebody thinks there's a reason not to do it, then all I'm hearing is reasons to do it.
And of course, now that we're down to four goals, we can certainly add that. And Brian, I just want to ask a question, to what degree is that becoming a goal messaging?
I think it's just that we value this, that the committee's taking on this work. And, and the fact that also, you know, Elise and Meg and Johnny at different times, and Naomi have attended those meetings. So I think that's a part of it as well.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, does this then authorize then the committee to update the plan then? That's what you're thinking that this?
I, I guess it's a, it's a nod to say like, yes, we want you to do that.
What, what happens a bunch when we give them the nod, is it all goes around one, it all goes around the schools and not the entire community. So that's where we want to make sure that we're part of that team as well.
Okay.
Because we're thinking of the broader community and not just the mom of a high school.
Yeah, so.
And maybe we go to every other month or every three months for the Active Transportation, to be able to give staff time to be able to work on things instead of attending the meeting every twenty-one days.
So even when you mention the schools, Johnny, in that regard, I mean, is it going beyond safe routes to schools? Or is it just within that?
No, it, it's going above and beyond some of that, you know, so I think it's a combined effort.
Trish and Carmen, any thoughts on this one, having support the updated Act of Communication Plan?
I'm neutral.
Neutral? Okay. Trish, any thoughts on that?
No, I'm, I'm fine with supporting it.
Okay.
All right, you guys are four minutes into your next one, so I just started the timer, you're just going to pass time.
Next one will be easy, Judy.
Just say yes.
Okay. I can have it all.
That's our easiest one.
All right. Collaborate with Y S D C and other partners to execute actions highlighting that Y S is open for business. Thoughts on that goal?
Well, yes, we are. Is this advocating for improvement or expanding what we're doing?
Um, sure, I mean, I think, uh, one of the things Johnny's highlighted, and it kind of relates to what Kevin, I think you're talking about, and yours, is, um, more, being more active about retention. So Johnny's highlighted that, that's been discussed at Y S D C. So that's an activity we have not really done. Yeah, otherwise, we had the one meeting last May that said we were open for business, we haven't done much more than that, so, um, yeah.
Well, I would say right off the bat, all three of these can stay. I mean, we could discuss them or not, but they're all valid, they all need to be done. I certainly share Gavin's, um, concern about roles and responsibility. And I guess, Brian, to your point about, you know, the meeting from last May, who should have been carrying the ball, if you will, since then? Should that have been Y S D C?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, that all happened under the, uh, Y S D C umbrella, it was very successful, and, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
You were there, yeah, of course you were. So I think it is just a matter of saying, recognizing, yes, this is good activity that we want to support. And, uh, I think related to that question, there's, we haven't done much to get ready for one this year because we were trying to figure out who was going to be the director of the Y S D C, and then, you know, Meg's role coming into play. So, you know, there's this idea that a meeting's going to happen in May, which it's not, obviously. But yeah, so, but yeah, but I think that's the other piece, is that, uh, we need to kind of reinvigorate those efforts because we haven't talked about it for a while.
I'm having difficulty with the vague, with how vague this is. So collaborate with Y S D C, we already collaborate, we, we do that, and other partners, whoever that may be, to execute actions highlighting that Y S is open for business. I don't know what that means.
Right, so under, underneath it, it's business retention.
Right.
Have that regional meeting, those are the two activities that we identified.
Right, and so business retention, I, okay, I don't want to, I don't want to get too crazy, but like, I don't, like, I, I just don't, I mean, I know what it means, but I, you know. I don't, like, I, I just don't, I mean, I know what it means, but I, you know, I was at a couple of the YSDC meetings, I didn't really see any, I mean, I did see, we did, we did some stuff, but I, it was like, it fell flat for me, and so I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we didn't, we haven't done the retention yet.
Right.
And that was why I was, I really appreciated that Johnny, like, said, hey, I think this is really important.
Well, as far as retention goes, yes, and is that gonna be, is that something that, I feel like that should be more collaborated, more, not collaboration, I feel like that should be on the staff, not on, not on you guys, but you, you are gonna have the relationships with the businesses. I mean, we do as council people, but, and I don't wanna say real relationships, because that, that also implies something else that I don't mean to imply. But as far as infrastructure goes, building, what, what's what, like, take, I don't know, Xylem for example.
I got a meeting first week I'm back.
Okay.
Yay.
Okay, and so, like, yes, also, and then we would expect that you report back to us, but, I don't know, this is clear, this is something I can think about, I'm, I'm cool on it.
I think there's some bullets that can be put under there, but I think the biggest thing is that YSDC, we're bringing Meg into this fold, has expanded the footprint of the YSDC, because now there's, the chambers heavily involved, and now there's a subcommittee, and then there's subcommittees, and subcommittees, and subcommittees. And we're just trying to wrangle it all together right now, because it went a long time stale.
Right.
And now all the people have, like, got great vibes and great mojo, and some of them are getting ahead of Meg and myself, and we can't keep up, and so we're, we're lagging behind. We've got some, the business product, Business One, is it Meg?
Oh, Business First.
First.
Biggest, Business First. We had that at one time, and then they went away with it. So we're, we're doing things, but I think business retention, we're also talking to the downtown businesses as well, so.
I'm hearing just a lot of business retention. Does it need to be changed to focus on business retention as a goal?
Well.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, I think that we, that number one, I think that we've really, we're meeting that by Meg's, like, like, just promoting her and having her be more involved. I think that that's going to meet a lot of that, and I do, yeah, I do agree with, you know, highlighting the businesses in having a, a specific level of support for that group. But I don't know that we need to have a whole bullet point, just because of what we've already decided to do.
It's also, it's interesting to me that the loudest voice right now is about business retention, but I think when you get that micro-focus, which I understand it's a, it's a, that scarcity mindset. If the village is able to take that not scarcity mindset and say, and we must bring in larger businesses, we must develop at the CBE, because those are gonna prevent scarcity mindset from having to occur. And if we get pulled all the way over to just business retention and away from, we do need to expand our economic footprint, we just stay in scarcity mindset.
So I think you say business retention and business development. You know, because those are both measurable goals.
Do we want to see that?
Yeah, no, I just, I, I think I resonate with a couple of Carmen's remarks related to, like, trying to understand how, how specific it is, and so like, the business retention stuff, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, where does our lane start, and where does the chamber's lane stop? Where is, what is at YSDC as a committee versus what is at staff at the village? So I guess the big overarching comment for me in this section is like, to my knowledge, we don't have a plan. We kind of take on random projects when they come up. So right now, for whatever reason, I had never heard us talk about business retention for the first two and a half years, and then recently, we're like, where's this business retention? Maybe it's because of the economy, or maybe something shifted, I, you know, maybe there's a dynamic with the, you know, with the other partners, with the chamber, with the, you know, YSC, with their change in leadership. Regardless of which pieces are happening, I'm just, I'm just hoping there's a plan. It's like, here's the things we're gonna do, here's why, and then we know what our role is and what other people might do.
Maybe that's a goal that we have, the creation of a economic development plan forward for the village.
I think that is on here.
That's what I meant for the third one, yeah.
We thought, clarify one more something like YSDC. Like, we're talking about a specific plan from the village.
Yeah, I was saying, vis a vis the village, meaning like, these things are interconnected. It seems like now we're functionally sort of staffing the YSDC when we, that's what happened when we took away the, the money didn't go to YSDC, and instead we brought on capacity internally, right?
Yep.
So all, I just mean, like, let's, so what are, what is our goal with this? Is it focusing on local businesses? I just never heard us say what we're doing that for. I never heard YSC say they were doing that before.
Well, that's because it took us four months to try to finalize goals, and then we changed them all again at the last meeting, so.
But can I, I need to back up just one second, because I know what Gavin's saying, he's not heard it in two and a half years. Probably because prior to COVID, the chamber did this amazingly. Right now, we're all trying to figure out who's doing what, Meg and I go through this daily. Because you've got the community foundation, you've got the downtown businesses association, you've got the chamber, you've got the YSDC, you've got the village. So we're all trying to figure out who's doing what, and so we all gotta get ready to have a meeting to say, because it's not fair for 10 people to show up to one business on five different days and say, what can we do to? So we're trying to get it all together, but I think that's the reason why you're hearing it now, Gavin, is because it's, it's trying to come back, and people don't know who's doing it.
But we are working on that.
We are working.
Openly communicating, and we can share that with you.
We've had some conversations about business retention specifically with certain.
Correct.
Businesses that owe it that way.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's ever done a good job on it, so I am gonna push back on that, including the chamber, and even when Karen was here, and she'll admit it. But it has been a more recent conversation, and so.
But I'm, I'm not hearing anybody disagree with the idea that, yes, or step one is like, let's figure out what our role is here, and how we work with these other entities. So like, a measurable thing would be like, by the end of the year, that we would have a, you know, a document and a work session to discuss it maybe, or, you know, some way to say, hey, here's the, here's what we're trying to do.
Meg, is that something that you, so you and Eric, is that a goal that you're able to achieve? Okay.
More than likely.
I just wanted to make sure.
It does take other people's, but I feel like, yeah.
Correct, but it's something that you could do.
Well, we.
Where's our lane?
And we have that draft Economic Sustainability Plan that was done.
Yes, I've collected all the prior stuff.
And we have the guidelines from the ORC, so, you know, we, we have some direction on it.
Yeah.
Is the goal would be clear enough for you to be able to achieve?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then if you need our input, I mean, then we'd have a meeting for it. I just remember, like, we did that joint meeting, and there was like, uh, YSC was like, saying that we're the economic development arm of the village, but we didn't ever have a meeting before that meeting, and we didn't ever have a meeting after that meeting, so we didn't have any, we didn't give any direction. So how would we have an arm?
Well, because we didn't secure a director, right? I mean, like, there was this, like, nine-month period of, of void, so, I mean, you're right.
The goal was to do that. I was saying the year before that, when there was a total director, there still wasn't any.
Okay. Like, yes.
We didn't ever talk about it in council.
Yeah, and let's, it's 4:30.
I think we're.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Economic, strengthening heritage, little businesses, organizations, clarifying your role for responsibility, YSC, figuring out the village's role, maybe what's our lane, coming up with plans. Anything else under economic development that's going along?
No.
No? Okay.
Right at five minutes.
Okay, give me one second, you guys want to go through anything, I'm gonna pull everything off the housing, it's gonna be a little bit different, but the same. I think I have so many goals.
Different.
Trish, for this goal, if Elise is doing what I think she's doing, if you want to text me and let me know where you want your dots to go. She's, they're selecting top five out of eight.
I would be really interested in talking about it, we just, we're talking about it.
Hey, alright, I'm making it. Making it up at the dog park, I wanna run up on it.
It's not your company, the dog park, man.
Yeah, that's where I'd go. That's where I'd go. It's my favorite place.
We haven't ever talked about it.
The sunset.
Maybe being at the.
The sunset's up there.
I mean, it's ridiculous, like, no, really.
Did you see, I just, I just saw it, I'm like, oh, God. Okay. Now, we're gonna do a bit of dot coding on housing, because we've got eight goals to propose. So I'm gonna need you and Trish, any of yours could do each. And what I would like each of you to do is basically place, and you don't have to use all five if you don't want to. They'll place a dot next to the ones that you would prioritize within the thing. And I want to just see where the dots fall. So we'll start with that, if you'd like to place your stickers.
Trish, if you've got your packet, uh, Elise, these are, these are in the packet, right?
Yes.
I heard Trish in my packet.
Yes.
What, I have my, yeah, I've got it pulled up.
So you're selecting your top five, if you want to just text me, or you can make an X and click me a picture, whatever's easiest.
Okay.
Under housing development, the instruction is, pick your top, top five and put stickers by them, you don't have to use all five, if you don't want to. And then I'll just stick your sticker where you tell me to.
And if you feel one needs to be added, I can do that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, this is one, there's a few that I think could be combined easily too.
Yep, yeah, I think we got one in, one in five are supposed to be together.
So when you tally, you can make it just. Is it good?
Oh, yeah, it's good.
They get it all the time, Trish, the guys do, they love it.
They do? Yeah, that's, I mean, that's really good. Oh, wow. Oh, just someone didn't get it working on the ride away. Tanner sent me pictures, and I always thought it would be like this minor thing, it's like this major project. Marshall.
Uh-oh, it's on Marshall?
Yeah.
That would be, yeah.
So the other thing, Elise says, I think two is, is just part of one, so I guess.
All right, Trish, this is yours, you're specifically referring to Lytech on this, right?
I, I've got a Lytech on two. But it's different.
Aboarded.
So.
See, because I feel like Kevin's got like, that one is the first part, and two is the second part with the future. So, so maybe.
Yep, 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 we'll discuss.
Do you currently go there?
Not yet.
How does that hit the kids, and that's a buddy, or?
Yeah, I think, I think it's the question. Yeah, right, yeah. See, that's the thing, did we just kill this, is that like, a policy? I, I know, I shouldn't be discussing, that's what I decided.
Not yet.
That's why I sighed, is it?
I put that on there.
Because I can't remember where we went on the policy, did we, did we kill it, the incentive?
Oh, that is kind of more of like an economic development one, isn't it?
It, it should, should be, I think.
Yeah, it's under housing, though.
Yeah, so I think we can move maybe number three. I mean, it's in housing, or excuse me, it's in economic development, whether we move it or not.
Well, I kind of feel like it relates to the Environmental Commission's proposal. Because embodied, embedded in that is incentivizing.
That way too, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that's where I kind of thought about it, is a housing.
Okay, okay.
Trish, anything?
I guess it depends on the incentive, yeah.
Yeah.
If they're financial, if they're not financial.
Right, right.
Yes, I'm sending it now.
Awesome.
That's called cooking the books. Everybody wanted this.
We all know who did it, because they're all both.
Right, right, well, there's fingerprints. I saved one for it. Give a key, mom.
Right.
Oh, you got, okay, you got a tiger, run up there.
Trish, are you texting them?
Yeah, I texted it to you.
So we just keep the ones that have three, three, three dots, right? To, to which number did you text it?
Can you shoot that over again, because I don't have it yet?
Sure.
Or just tell us.
No, I'm just kidding.
I can do that. So I have number three, number four, number five, seven, and eight. Wait, one, two, three, yeah, that's right, and then four.
Okay.
I assume with five, we would discuss, like, the funding.
Okay. All right. So we've got three that clearly won, four that have clearly emerged here. Number three, number four, number seven, and number eight. All right. So let's discuss, we've got strong consensus on, we've got the majority on four of them. So looking to maybe keep three, four, seven, and eight. We've got five goals, status clear policies and incentives for developers, continue strategic zoning improvements, determine implement housing strategy, broaden decision-making by seeking external expertise. That's four, yep. And then we've got split on one, two, and three, we've got two, there isn't a need. Thoughts on?
Five and one very well may be combined, right?
So there's. One, one, two, and five, really.
One, two, and five, yep.
Yeah.
So, so does that make five dots for that combined thing?
How would you all see combining these? Or is there one that you feel rolls it all up nicely?
So with one and five, continue to advance a Lytech project, that's not, it's out of our hands at this point.
So it might, the complete and final, complete the project, like hopefully will get awarded, but maybe not.
So if awarded, comma, complete Lytech projects.
Well, that's exactly what five says.
Yes, that's true. Yep, it's granted, awarded.
So maybe just.
And I would say up to what dollar amount, right? And that remains to be seen.
Fifteen minutes?
So that, I added that in my five, but it would be, you know, dependent for me upon how much we're talking about.
Right, but we can't know that yet. Because we don't even know if we're gonna get the award. And I don't want to be like, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But there are some bridges that we cannot even think about crossing until we get closer to the finish line. And once we are awarded, if we are awarded, we will have time then to make a decision to determine how much we're gonna decide to throw at it.
Well, I think if we are awarded, the other four go by the wayside until the other one is built. Because that's, it's gonna task staff and the community while one is being built. And we can work on some of the other things, but I don't, if you would. It's not a goal that's gonna get completed in the same year.
Well, I'm not married to the wording, but I think one does the same as two and five. And I think we should be thinking about both, so.
This seems Lytech specific to me. The only thing in this that isn't getting carried is Cascades and Glass Farm as specific developments.
Correct, right.
Well, but they are being thought about.
Right, well, that's why I think, I don't know, when I thought about it, I, you know, it was like prioritize future. Which, you know, I was not thinking that we're like digging into Glass Farm or other things yet. So, but I think we should be thinking what comes next. That seems doable.
Yeah.
But technically, Brian, even though we're not digging at Glass Farm, we're actively working and have been actively working on Glass Farm for the last ten years.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have got a lot of things stubbed that way, infrastructure wise. So that's gotta take priority because, I mean, if not ten years, it's for nothing.
Yep, and I, and I, you all know, I've tried to get the, the, I tried to thumbnail, if you will, half of our affordable housing money for Glass Farm in particular. So I was very intentional about that. Um, and when we think about Housway's list of housing priorities, I don't even remember what the orders were, uh, you know, but, but, you know, Corey Street. I, I don't know to what degree stuff is stuffed, stuffed out, but, you know, I just think, I think Glass Farms sort of bubble, the bubbles up to the top.
Yep.
So is there a specific goal in here that we need to add around Glass Farm?
Well, let me ask you, Elise, you said the last two on this list were in the top four, right?
Yep.
Okay, so aside from Lytech, don't we need those before we can do any of the others? Don't we need to like, you know, work on the, the last two first?
Yeah, I think that might be about where I was at. To me, like six and seven. At least six, seven, maybe eight. Sorry, I'm just having a hard time processing all the words, but are about like, let's have a strategy. And then, so that I would be hesitant to design, to say right now, yes, Glass Farm, or yes, Cascades. And then, what does yes mean? Does yes mean we like it, but we don't give any money to it? Does yes mean we spend all our mon- you know, lots of money on it? To me, it's all, it's like strategy, and the strategy would answer these questions of the specific things.
Yep. Yep. So to me, I would almost take this away and say that we start there.
But I, I will say, Kevin, like I would love to see, um, the Glass Farm developed and completed.
So, yes, I, I think that those can go, I mean, we.
One?
Right.
And Trish, can you see what's happening?
So it's the Cascades and Glass Farm, it says facilitate the next steps.
Thank you. I was taking notes, so that helps.
I don't even know, I mean, the facilitation of the next steps don't, what is that even actually mean? Like, in addition to what? We can't. Like, are we talking about in addition to what we already do? Because we already do that. Right, but we can't, I mean, I think that that's why we're going with seven and eight. Well, seven and eight, because we can't know. I mean, we can speculate, but until we have a plan.
Correct.
Then this doesn't.
Yep. Starting with a strategy based on a council staff agreed upon definition of affordable housing.
Right, one of the things that's cool about the council staff agreed upon definition is that we have definitions. They're all, we just, we have, maybe we should use the things that are fed. Have that, that we have those models. Another piece too, like the eight, because this is mine, but, um, it's really important because I think that it's part of our responsibility as council and for staff to, um, we used, this village used to be not as insular as it, as it is now. And so, and, and in, in relation to housing, looking at more progressive models and aggressive models to, to take care of the housing thing was, we were all over the West Coast. So there's a part here, the external expertise means all external expertise. So talking to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency to come and talk to us about stuff, talking to developers that are doing, um, sustainable, affordable development. And getting, getting, um, you know, casting a wider net so that we can, we can get the best information, the best information possible. And we have some really good examples on how to do this outside, outside, outside of the village, and quite frankly, for what this village deserves outside of the state. And so we need to start researching and focusing, focusing on, on, on that. I think, I, in my opinion, those two.
Would, would not most of what's.
Five minutes. Thank you.
Would not most of what's in eight come out of the str- strategy?
Strategic plan or strategy?
The seven?
Strategy.
Or at least that's, seven, yeah. Whatever we call, whatever we want to call number seven.
So what's seven?
Wouldn't, so number seven lead to those action items, Carmen, that are outlined in the year?
I think that it could, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So one other thing, just to
Yes.
Uh, tie in the Environmental Commission and Susan's. So from what I see, and these are already prioritized, um, the Environmental Commission's proposal fits under number three. And, um, what Susan's talking about falls under number four. And so, since we don't have a lot of time, I mean, unless someone really doesn't like those proposals, I think we can talk more about them later, but they fit in those categories, so.
Well, but hold on, because Planning Commission.
Not later.
Wanted specific guidance, yes or no inclusionary zoning.
Right.
And that doesn't get covered on number four. I was just gonna say that I think part of Susan's request is included in the number four.
Right.
Uh, could be, but I think broadly, she's talking about like a bigger approach to inclusionary zoning that is what they're looking for direction on, like overall, a whole, um, inclusionary zoning program and like section that with every new development, uh, five, five to fifteen percent will be set aside as affordable. Which is different than just making a couple of changes in the current zoning or, or like, you know, doing zoning improvements to support diverse housing options. So I don't know if it really fits under that completely.
Right, right.
Unless we just want to not continue to answer, you know, her question.
Well, if you did answer her question right now, what would your answer be?
For inclusionary zoning? I've said that I don't believe a full overall, like a full program of, of inclusionary zoning set aside is appropriate for the village. Uh, at least right, not right now, but, um, offering it as an incentive through the PUD, um, or some kind of offset through the PD section of the code. So if you have higher density, uh, allow higher density, then you also set aside, you also provide affordable housing, or something along those lines. I have to go, I'll be right back. I'll be right back. Nothing's wrong, I'll be right back.
Carmen, you're coming back, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I, this is one of those areas where I'm not the expert in these things. I certainly hear all the stuff happening in the ether. Would yield very, lean very heavily on, on your opinion?
Are we still having a third hour?
No. That was never, that was never proposed.
Yeah, it was. We were gonna have a third hour before our last meeting.
Oh, in a separate meeting, or today?
No, I, yeah, I don't mean tonight. I just meant, we initially scheduled two hours.
Important words, not tonight.
And the reason why, and the reason why I mentioned that, yeah, is we've got basically ten minutes left and one more. I don't know. I think it would be rushing it to say yea or nay on the inclusionary zoning and ec- and the Environmental Commission thing.
Well, I think it ought to be, it ought to be part of a, a discussion. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying throw the baby out with the bathwater. But, but, yeah, we need to talk about it and, and make a good decision. And I do indeed love Meg's approach to making it part of, you know, maybe some incentive package or a PUD or whatever, but not across, across the board. I, I think that's a good look. And, and we need to be careful with things like that, that look good in large, you know, mega metropolis cities and they just don't fit here, no matter how good they sound.
Yeah.
So I'm seeing five goals that we picked, three, four, five, seven and eight.
If we've got.
Before I remove this, Gavin, you would propose this. Is there anything that you want to say on this?
I'm just assuming that in the seven then, that there's gonna be input in strategy. I mean, I don't, I, it's not a hill I was gonna die on. I don't, I just, I thought we were starting to systematically address a strategy.
Yep.
And then we stopped. And so I'm assuming that seven, that's why I said to me, as long as we do have input, that should be fine.
So Gavin, well, it's gone now, so I don't ask my question.
I can still write, we're good.
So I, 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 the word functional, I mean, is, is that, Gavin, were you thinking about proposing some improvements to the current housing committee makeup process, et cetera?
No, I mean, it just, it wasn't, we haven't been operating. I don't know if, I don't think it's like written on anything, but it was like, so I was just saying, hey, there was a time when, when I started, where it was like there was a housing advisory committee, and, you know, there's these words. I'm just saying, hey, just so everybody's clear, we're not doing a committee right now, so I just, hey, let's.
Well, but a hundred percent agree with that, and, yeah, we do have a committee, let's put them to work.
Well, we don't have a committee. We really don't have a committee.
That's my point, is that right now there is no one, so the question of who guides the strategy, there was an answer. We had done a work session, we had talked as a group about having there be a, a committee, and right now there isn't one. So I'm fine with the theoretical idea of it being, the thing we haven't done with this is then come back and like, who's in charge of whether or not it happens?
Yes.
And that will be coming. That's probably that next hour that Brian's talking about.
Yeah.
He panicked all the time.
That's not tonight.
Four forty-five on Friday at Brian's. Close the room.
As long as, as we don't lose the, the housing committee idea, I think that's good.
I'll write that down under there. So we have five goals. Before we move on, any last thoughts on the five goals that we have for housing?
Nope.
No? Okay, I'm gonna write them down. Okay, our last and final theme, leadership to progressive development. I put one and two together, since they're both strategic planning, so I think these can be rolled up. Complete a village strategic plan, develop and run a thoughtful strategic planning process, and complete a council and staff supportive plan with the timeline and process agreed upon sometime in 2025. Thoughts on that?
Oh, okay, okay. I'm with you now.
Yeah, yeah, just put these right next to each other, because I think that we can probably get rid of this and keep it up.
We haven't heard anyone say that we aren't doing this, so it's just a matter of like when, because we've talked about it and we haven't talked about it in a long time, so.
Yep.
Trish, do you have thoughts on this?
For the strategic plan?
On number two.
Number two is also a strategic planning, Trish.
Yeah, just combining them, that would be fine.
Yep. Okay, so there's still council appetite to do a strategic first, correct?
A hundred percent.
Okay, cool. Okay.
And, and what is the goal, Trish, for number three, the, the, I think, I, I know some of the answer, but the comprehensive wage study, et cetera, what, what is the goal?
Well, to make sure that we're paying our people within the range of comparable employers. Um, and that may not be a hundred percent villages, based off of what we have within our village. Um, we may have to look at, you know, some smaller cities. But I think that we need to, we need to review that to make sure that we, you know, that we're hitting our marks. And also just have a solid plan. Um, not every position has minimum mid and max ranges. And that would be employed, important for planning purposes, um, for budgeting purposes, and then for employees to know, you know, um, based off of goals that are set annually, you know, where, where they could end up.
Trish, um, it, I think I've heard this before, but are you contemplating that this wage study would be do, done by an outside contractor, consultant, whatever?
Um, you know, it, it can be. It certainly can be. Um, I think that that would be based off of, um, what we end up with. You know, as far as all of these goals and, you know, time and energy of staff.
Trish, um, I'm, I'm on LinkedIn and, and I know that you are sometimes, but Riverside has actually got an RFP out right now that we could actually uh, grab from Josh. It is for a, uh, to conduct an organization, organizational assessment, uh, and that would be on the staffing, the wages and all that. Uh, I can grab that and we can look at it, and then I think that would cover this topic as well, if that's what you would like for me to do. Lisa, we.
Yeah, that's.
I agree with you. I think we need to look at it, because it's also gonna assess if we have enough people to be able to do the jobs that we need to do.
Right.
And if we are, are we paying them too much, not enough, and, and it could let us know where we stand.
Yeah, I just, you know, since I've been here, I've had a suspicion that our police force is not, is, uh, not paid, um, comparatively with, uh, neighboring villages and, you know, again, comparable cities. And I think, again, we'd have to look at that because of, of the fact that we're a village with police, with water, with, you know, other, other things. But, um, you know, I know that, uh, it's been difficult to try to recruit, um, and, you know, just to stay competitive. I just think it's important, um, that we have solid numbers for, you know, for, for Paige to work with.
I guess I also just want to underscore.
Village-wide.
Yeah, sorry. I just want to underscore that if we're committed to this goal, to me doing a wage study means that we then do something with that. So, so I think there's gotta be a commitment to that as well.
Right, adjusting.
Rents, right. Because I, I think it's a great thing to do, um, if you act on it, so.
Even if the study suggests lowering people's wages? Do you still act on?
I don't think that, I've never seen one. I've never seen one that says, you know, you know, uh, l- lower your, your longtime employee's wages. I have seen where, you know, again, you may need to take action. It'll, it'll say like a percentage, like you're in the, you're in the top ten percent of your comparables. You're like in the bottom ten percent of your comparables. It's, it's more information like that so that you can go, okay, well, maybe that's why we have trouble hiring these types of positions. You know, how, what can we do to, you know, amend that? Does it have to be salary? Could it be salary? Could it be salary and pickups? I mean, it would, it's, it's fruitful information to invite a discussion, um, either way.
Trish wants this, Brian is on LinkedIn, you're on board for this, Gavin, Kevin, are you two on board for this?
I don't feel strongly about it. For me, it really has to do with the cost, honestly. So if you told me that it was going to cost $200,000 to find out what seems like we kind of already know, then I probably wouldn't want to spend $200,000. If it could cost $5,000, and it feels like it would be truly useful information, then I'd probably be interested in it. So it's, I don't feel super strongly about it, it just matters how much it costs.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't, I don't agree with, we kind of already know. Because since I've been there, I've asked like lots of questions on, um, you know, pay ranges, pay rates, like how, how is this being determined? Like, how do we determine, you know, the annual increase? How do we determine all these, these things? And we don't have a solid answer.
I'm concerned about this, but I'm also wondering, does five, Gavin, do you feel like number five, the, I think it's the fifth one, is, is
Together.
Almost the same or similar?
Yeah, and that, Trish, the last part of what you said of like, I don't think we've had clarity on pieces of it. I was just specifically looking at the wages as it pertains to the positions interrelated with others. But the piece around wanting clarity around the steps and the longevity and the,
Right.
all that stuff.
Right.
I definitely.
Yeah, and that definitely needs, like, we've asked for that, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're, they're different, very distinct to me. Yeah, because one is about.
Yeah, I think that those could be combined.
And one's comparing extra.
Paige, did you have a question?
I do have a question. So, um, I just wanted to put it out there, since this is, this is on the board right now. So just coincidentally, I'm in the throes of conducting or putting together a full recruitment retention strategy for the department. And it includes, um, a thorough and comprehensive look at compensation and benefits, which obviously, without paying a third party company, I would have to conduct myself. So if it were to be placed in front of council, the cost of a third party would be too much. Would you then trust staff's judgment if I came to you and said, here are the results of my, my findings?
One hundred percent.
Your analysis.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to put that thought out there, so.
And I, you don't feel like we've, we don't feel like we've questioned it.
Oh, no, I, I, that's not at all the territory I'm trying to edge into. I just want, because he raised the question, I then wanted to make sure that, you know, this is a public meeting, so put it out there that if I then come to you and say, hey, I've done this myself, and it turns out we're grossly underpaid, I don't think that's the case. But, you know, there will be a gap, that's already evident in my plan. I want to make sure your response will be, okay, we trust you, since we declined to hire a third party company to do so.
I mean, that's what, no, we're not going to pay the money, says, because we still want the work done.
Right.
So, I mean, we all need to understand, either we're going to pay, or we're going to do it internally. But, because we want the information.
But again, I'm back to Brian's point, if you get that information and then don't act on that information, that sends a resounding message back to staff in a way that it might not if that information was coming from an outside party.
Okay. Create a clear process for council managed staff evaluations and contracts that play, including check-ins during the year slash between evaluations, including our council staff. Thoughts on that one?
We've already agreed to do, I mean, we just, we just agreed to do this, right? So I think.
Yeah, we agreed to do that.
Timing mismatch. We wrote this out before we had agreed, but.
But it, I mean, but it should be a goal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I, I think so, from the air. Yeah.
Achieve clarity regarding the staff salaries, yeah, and benefits that impact council managed decisions, pay rates on job and contracts. Yeah, that to me feels separate to the wage study, because this would be no current, now, information, right? Based off the salaries, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
We already agreed to do it, and the staff's already agreed to gather the information, so I think we're, yeah.
And that's five. And it's five.
Expand networking slash relationship building, grow your regional leadership role and offer opportunities. Thoughts on that one?
This is one that feels kind of like in that broader goal kind of A category. I don't feel strongly against it, but it wouldn't be something I'd be like, yes, we have to prioritize that with our money or something.
That was mine.
Okay.
So, yeah, that started with just, well, when we initially were doing village manager goals, right? That was the, the first thing, and so, but then I crafted it a little bit differently. But, yeah, I mean, the idea is, I think the work around having those regional networks and relationships makes us stronger.
That goes back to the not, you know, the, the, it being insular versus not, which I think is important. So expanding, so we could do that with all of us, we could all go to parties. And go eat.
Yeah, let's do it.
There's got to be opportunities.
I know since Johnny's been manager, he's doing that a lot.
Yeah.
Since he's been, yeah.
Okay. We have goals. Well done, everyone.
Indeed we do.
So, I will take these away, I will clean these up, I will get it in our final list. That will forth be presented, I believe, at council at some point to adopt as resolution, is that right, Trish? Next step, yeah, and then staff will take these away, come back with timelines, all things.
Okay.
Great, thank you all very much.
Well done, Elise.
Beneficial, effective, efficient, all the positive words. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All the favoritism. We are adjourned by acclamation.